Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 16th, 2024 Meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. If I could ask everyone to take a moment, please silence their cell phones. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by FCTV. If there's any private party in the audience this evening wishing to record these proceedings, please step forward, just identify yourself if you haven't already done so.
Thank you.
We do have a member of the Falmouth Enterprise here who may be recording. I'd like to take a moment just to introduce members of the board, starting at the audience's far left is Frank Duffy. He is a full-voting member. Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morris. I'm currently serving as Chair. Suzanne Murthy, who is our clerk, and Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. We have two members who are not able to be here this evening. We're joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes, well as the town zoning bylaws, in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public, and to allow for a full and fair discussion of a project prior to closing the hearing process in 180 days and reaching a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a preliminary presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comment should be directed only at the project and can include an opinion in favor or opposition, or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The Chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the Chair. Come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It will not amplify your voice, but it is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that it has enough information to make a decision, the hearing will then be closed. Once a hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves and make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of three members, a simple majority, is required for the approval of a comprehensive permit. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law Chapter 40A and B. Just a preliminary thing, we have two hearings scheduled tonight to include these cases. The developer's presentation, followed by a brief board questions and comments. We will then open the hearing to comment by the public. As indicated, there are two hearings tonight. The first hearing this evening is for 19 North Falmouth Highway. It will be heard from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. If you're here for Zero Acapescot, that will start at 8:00 PM. We still have plenty of seats. If there's anyone in the hallway, please join. If we get to the point where we're reaching capacity, this is a public hearing, so no one has to leave, but we may would just ask the priority be given to the abutters or people wishing to speak to the hearing right before us. We have a few other things on our agenda this evening. First is public comment. If any member of the public would like to make a comment about anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda, please step forward and do so now. Seeing none, we have no other continuations, so we will start continuing with new hearings. First up is 03824, West Falmouth Estates, LLC, 19 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, requesting a comprehensive permit to construct 24 single-family dwelling units, six of which will be affordable.
And we have, we have two letters of comments from abutters.
For the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Daigle, 1550 Falmouth Road, Sennettville. I'm a local attorney there. We've given you a, Billy LeVitchi has a book, a little light reading there. Anyway, I'm here as required in General Law's Chapter 40B, as you know. The applicant is West Falmouth Estates, LLC. The principals are Robert Bocher and William Hintermeister. Men, sir. The local representative is Robert Peener. He's right there. And the engineers that were presenting them tonight are Rich Tabazinski and Adam Drake from Atlantic. As you mentioned, the applicant is looking for 24 single-family houses, six of which are affordable, with a 660-foot-long driveway. This is currently zoned in a single residential B, and they'll be looking for some exceptions from the code, your zoning code 240-305 and health code FHR. So again, with just the introductions, I'm going to let Rich Tabazinski present the plan.
Good evening. Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers. And just wanted to run through the drawings for you and the design that was completed. The, we have an old-school presentation board here for paper, paper copies of the plans, and also on the screen, we'll basically have the, run through the same drawings that we have the presentation board in front of you here. So first of all, I guess I would like to describe the set of drawings that we put together for this. The one that you see in front of you now is just the presentation board that we put together for, just specifically for this hearing. It's essentially the first sheet of the site plans that we did, which comprised five sets of drawing sheets, one being a site layout plan, preliminary subdivision plan that's on the screen right now. Following that is an existing conditions plan. That is a grading and drainage drawing. Then Sheet 4 is a preliminary utility plan. And then we provided on Sheet 5 a preliminary plan and profile of the roadway. Along with those site plans, which we feel meet the minimum requirements of the 40B regulations and your zoning bylaw comprehensive permit regulations, we've submitted a letter on the, just on trip generation, and as Peter had mentioned, an exceptions list of the exceptions from your local codes and regulations that we're requesting as part of the project. So I would like to start by just describing the property that the proposed development sits on. So this is the existing conditions plan that you see in front of you now. The project is, the site is 4.27 acres of land on the east side of Route 28A. It's approximately 400 feet north of the Thomas Landers Road intersection, which is down here to the south. It's not shown on the site plan here, but it's about 400 feet south of the, I mean, the project's 400 feet north of that interchange. As you can see on the site, the front portion of the property is about an acre of land here on the front portion of the site that's, has an existing single-family dwelling, along with an associated septic system and utilities, along with a detached garage, distinct driveway, and some lawn and a cleared brush area in the back here. So that area that you see, it's about an acre of land that's presently developed as a single-family residence. The rear of the property, as you can see, this back piece here is a wooded piece of property. And looking at the topography that's shown on the site plan, you can tell that there's a rise up to the very peak. There's, I guess, a hill on the backside here. So as you can see, the front part of the property is fairly flat. The back part of the property rises up close to, closer to Route 28. The plans can show also the off-ramp of Route 28. This is the southbound off-ramp. It's located about 65 feet from the property line. So if you can see my cursor there, that's the property line. The off-ramp is about 65 feet away. And in between there is about 50 feet of natural wooded area. So as Peter had mentioned, the zoning of the site is a, is a single-residence B. Got to the presentation board, might be a little easier to hear. And I wanted to mention a few things in terms of the property and whether, and some of the existing parameters on the site. It's not located in any flood zone. It's not located in any Water Resource Protection District or Zone 2 to any water supplies or any surface water, water supplies. It's not located in any mapped habitat area based on the mapping from the Mass. Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species Program. It's not located in any AC/EC or, it's also, there are no wetlands on or adjacent to the property. And as I mentioned, it's not located in any area of critical environmental concern. There is a wildlife corridor habitat overlay district on the property that encompasses pretty much everything to the west of Route 28. It is also partially located in the West Falmouth Village Historic District. That's up on, along Route 28, West Falmouth Highway here. So part of the property is in that overlay district. It's served by Town Water, which is out on Route 28A. There's overhead utilities out on Route 28A. There is no sewer in this location, no town sewer, so the site is served by individual onsite septic systems. Just a couple other dimensions for the site. It's about, located about a mile from Buzzards Bay to the west. It's located about 500 feet or so from Crocker Pond, which is to the southwest of the site. It's also not located in any DEP-designated nitrogen-sensitive areas. Those that were instituted by the DEP in their Title V regulation changed back in 2023. Those areas are approximately 1,400 to 1,600 feet away to the north and south, but this area was excluded from those nitrogen-sensitive areas. And it's also located about 2,000 feet or so from Herring Brook over by Silver Beach. And it, depending on where you measure where Silver Brook starts, it's about 2,000 or so, 2,500 feet from there. So that's kind of an overview of the site itself and some of the locations of the site. The project that's being proposed, as mentioned earlier, is 24 single-family lots. Those are shown here along in our preliminary subdivision plan. There's one single family, one single roadway cul-de-sac of about 660 feet. As you can see, the lots are proposed on each side of that cul-de-sac, which kind of splits the property in half. Six of the 24 lots will be designated as affordable units. Those are designated on the plans with a small, with a letter A, as shown on the screen. Those represents 25% of the total number of lots. The rest, the 18 lots, eight would be market rate. The building styles that are proposed, that are shown here in yellow, there's a couple building styles. I believe there were some architectural plans submitted with the application, but basically, to simplify it, they're basically each three-bedroom units, two stories with a garage, enclosed garage. Also, there'd be another parking space provided for each of the lots on the driveway in front. So you basically have two parking spaces per unit in accordance with your bylaw. We've also provided a couple visitor parking spaces at the entrance here near the common lot at the entrance. This lot, while I'm talking about it here, is about 10,000 square feet. It's a common area that's proposed for the septic system. That'll serve a portion of the lot, of the lots. And the other lot that I'll highlight here is a drainage lot, basically, that has, shown in blue is our stormwater retention basin, which will be designed to handle the stormwater runoff from the roadway and portions of the lots. So speaking of the lots, they are ranging in size. There's a table here that describes the size in terms of the lot area width and frontage of each lot on the plan. We've also given you your lot coverage from building percentage and also a lot coverage from impervious surface, including walkways and driveways. And so those, I'm not going to run through every single lot, but they range in size from a minimum of about 4,000 square feet up to about 11,000 square feet for some of the ones in the back. The average, I would estimate it being around 6,000 square feet or so. The frontage, again, varies throughout the development. We have several lots in the back here, which are, kind of, which just have 15 feet of frontage, and others have like over 70 feet of frontage. Again, averaging it out, it's about 50, 60 feet is the average lot width out here. But again, that varies throughout based on how we laid out the, each lot. So these tables, again, on the site plan, we're providing just a breakdown of the building, the types, the lots. We provided a table of just the zoning requirements in terms of what the requirements are under the SRB zoning and what's being proposed with the comprehensive permit. And also just a table of the parking requirements, which shows basically two spaces per unit. Moving forward, just in terms of a description of the roadway design, I'll switch over to Sheet 4 on the site plans, which has a cross-section of the roadway. That's shown here, right in the corner of the site plan in Sheet 4. But it says, like I had mentioned earlier, it's 660 feet long from the beginning to the very end of the cul-de-sac. It's, we propose a 20-foot-wide paved area, pavement for the roadway, you know, 10-foot lanes in each direction. There'll be vertical concrete curb on one side of the roadway, where there'll also be a four-foot sidewalk. And there'll be Cape Cod berm on the opposite side of the roadway. Its location, oh, I just wanted to mention also, the turnaround at the end would be 100-foot diameter paved area with a landscaped island in the center of it. It'll also be underneath this paved area and landscaped island, one of the common septic areas, which I'll describe in a little more detail further on. In terms of the location of the roadway, we've offset it from Burke Lane pretty much as much as we could. You know, it is about 180 feet from Burke Lane to the entrance of the subdivision. That's one of the exceptions that we had to request for, because I think your regulations require, I think, a 300-foot offset. But as you can see, based on where our property limits are, we can't meet that requirement. The, it's also shown on the site plan here. It's located along a very straight section of Falmouth Highway, of Route 28. We honestly see no issues with site distance from this entrance here in either direction. We'll have probably well over 300 feet looking north or south here, so I don't believe that site distance is any concern for that location. I'll switch over to Sheet 5 here, which shows the profile of the roadway. So this basically gives you an idea of how the roadway grades would be proposed. The darker line that you see is the proposed profile of the center line, and the dashed line here, which is in lighter pen, the dashed line, that's the existing grades that are out there along the center line. It's an exaggerated scale, where the horizontal scale, or vertical scale is a lot more exaggerated than the horizontal. So you'll, it looks steep here. That's just the visual effects of the engineering plan. But as you can see, it does go up uphill towards the backside of the property, and therefore, we have our roadway designed to climb up to a reasonable level at the back of the property. So to describe this, basically, at this point here, we've provided a low point in the roadway. As it, so as you're coming off of North Falmouth Highway, the road will dip down to a low point and then climb up. We'll have a fairly steep section here. 10% would be the proposed profile grade here. That's the maximum allowed by your subdivision regulations. So we held that. And then we flattened out towards where the end of the road is, cul-de-sac is at a 3% grade. And that, again, meets the, meets your subdivision regulations for the grades at a cul-de-sac. Utilities, I'll back up one sheet here. These might be a little difficult to see, but just in describing the utilities that are being proposed for the project, the project and the individual lots will be served by Town Water. We would propose an eight-inch water main tapped off of the existing main in Falmouth Highway. It would come up, loop around the cul-de-sac. We'd have a hydrant at the end. And I think, and then just individual lot services to each of the lots from that proposed water main. The utilities would be underground, as also, that's shown in our cross-section here. So any gas or electric utilities would be under the roadway or underneath the sidewalk, and those would all be underground. We would also have a drainage system in the roadway, which I'll describe in a little more detail. But I did want to describe the sewer and septic systems for the lots. So it's basically a combination, sewage disposal for each of these lots is a combination. There's going to be two common septic systems. One located here at the rear of the property that would serve five of the lots that surround the cul-de-sac, okay? Each of those lots would have its own individual septic tank, but then that, that tank would discharge to a soil absorption system or leaching system that would be located right in the center of the cul-de-sac here. And that would serve, like I had mentioned, five of the lots. Nine of the lots would have, again, their own individual septic tanks, but then they would go into a common sewer line that would go down to another common leaching system or soil absorption system at the very beginning of the property. This would all be a gravity system, all, serving all the way down to this, to this area. Then, because the flow would be over 2,000 gallons a day, it would be pressure-dosed from there. That's in accordance with the Title V regulations. So there'd be two common septic systems that would serve basically 14 of the lots. Then 10 of the lots would have individual septic systems located at the rear of their houses. And that would have a septic tank and leaching field, as shown here. Question may raise as far as why are we doing it that way? Why we have individuals on some lots and common areas on the others? It basically is because of the configuration of the property and the configuration of the lots and houses that we're dealing with here. We tried to get as many individual septic systems on their own lots as possible, but it just, in some of these, as you can see, it just wasn't feasible. So we split it up, we think in a good scenario, where you have some of the sewage disposal systems would be in the front, some would be at the rear, and some would be on individual lots that kind of spreads out the discharge throughout the property. So I feel it's a good design that would meet Title V regulations for the site. I do want to mention that up in the front of the site here, where this common septic system would be located, would also be kind of used as a common open space area with a little park setting out there, where there would be some grass and landscaped areas in that front. And so that's in the presentation plan, that kind of shows as a green area, and that's kind of a dual use of that property, if you will, not only handling the septic sewage disposal system, but being a common area for the residents. Drainage, stormwater is another, the last area I like to describe in terms of the design. Basically, the roadway drain, roadway runoff would be collected in a series of catch basins leading down the roadway and piped to the stormwater basin at the entrance of the property. That's shown in blue on the presentation plan. Essentially, that would be designed as an infiltration basin to recharge the stormwater from this upper portion of the roadway. The lower portion would be put in a subsurface system. Just due to the inverts and elevations of the catch basins, we had to put it into an underground system over here in the front of the site. And again, that would be an infiltration system designed to recharge the stormwater. There would also be, prior to discharging to these infiltration systems, we would have some water quality measures, likely in the form of water quality units, such as a storm scepter or a first defense unit, the proprietary unit that would be put in one of the manholes prior to discharging into this infiltration system. And that would mainly be, again, for cleaning of suspended solids and phosphorus and other contaminants that potentially could arrive from a roadway, from a roadway system. The roofs from all, the roof runoff would be all proposed into roof drain drywells on each of the individual lots. So that, those are shown here with little circles on each of the lots. So as you can see, we're proposing to recharge all the roof runoff on each of the individual lots. And I just wanted to mention, in terms of the number of catch basins that we have along the roadway, the typical catch basin spacing for subdivisions and roadways is 300 feet. Typically, you want a catch basin every 300 feet along a particular roadway and at all the low points. So if we met, if we use that standard, we would have a catch basin at the low point here, and then we'd have one about right in the middle, one set of catch basins, and that would meet most subdivision standards. But we're actually proposing twice as many as that. We're proposing three sets, well, four sets of catch basins, three along the main set of roadway here. And again, due to the steepness of the roadway, we feel that it's important to have those additional sets of catch basins. And we've also, again, because of the steepness of the road, we've also proposed each of those catch basins to have double grates and to have high-capacity cascade grates along with that. So basically, we've really, we feel we've really provided some extra measures to handle the stormwater from the roadway before it gets down to the low area here. And that low area that we're creating at the entrance here also will prevent any of the runoff from the roadway making its way out onto North Falmouth Highway. That's part of the design of the profile, which I had mentioned here earlier. There's a small area here that the road, if, you know, any roadway, any bypass of catch basins or any runoff that makes it down to here will be caught in that low area and not make it out onto West Falmouth Highway. Presently, you know, we did take a look at it. There's probably about a half acre of land maybe that is presently flowing from the site onto North Falmouth Highway, including the driveway and other, you know, the lawn area from that. But after the development, as you, as we can basically say that we're really reducing that amount by, by capturing all the runoff on the site and not allowing it to get out onto North Falmouth Highway. So that's the general overview of the, of the site plans and the preliminary subdivision plans, which again, we feel meet your regulations in terms of what we've provided, in terms of the content of a preliminary plan. We did provide along with this an exceptions list. It's, you know, it, there's quite a few exceptions. There's about six pages of that. I, again, for time, I don't want to, I'm not going to go through, through every single one of those. But they're pretty standard as expected, you know, lot size, lot frontage setbacks and everything that we're, that we're, we're requesting waivers of that are pretty standard for, for comprehensive permit projects. I did also want to mention the trip generation, the traffic generation letter that we also submitted with this, with this application. And based on the latest I Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation manuals for single-family detached housing, using that, that standard, we were able to calculate that the, on an average weekday, there'd be, based on the 24 houses, there'd be a total of 113 vehicles entering and then hun, and, and exiting the site. Breaking that down, that's over the 24-hour period. So breaking that down on, for the peak hours during the morning and evening, that's the peak hours for a, for a subdivision is when people leave to work and then come back from work. And that's usually the peak hour of the adjacent roadway traffic also. The morning peak hours is from, is, the standard is from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM in the morning. And so at that point in time, we'll have four, estimated to be four vehicles entering and 13 vehicles exiting the, the sub, the property. And in the evening, it's kind of reversed slightly. Entering the site, coming home from work would be about 14, would be 14 people, or 14 vehicles entering the subdivision and nine vehicles exiting. So just even at that highest peak where we have a total of 23 vehicles entering and exiting in the peak hour, that's basically two vehicles every five minutes to just average that over, over a typical five-minute period of time. So just wanted to give you that overview. So we kind of feel that the traffic generation from this project is fairly, fairly minimal compared to any larger, larger-scale developments. And honestly, we feel that Route 28, again, the site distances are acceptable and the width of Route 28A are, is accept, is, is fine to take care of that additional traffic. Comment letters, I think we, we've, we've received, up to date, we've received four comment letters from various departments in town, from the, I think, DPW, planning, water, housing. What we would like to do is basically wait until we get all comment letters in place, including any peer review comments that, that might, may come up in the future. Also, we'd like to take account of any butters comments either at this hearing or written comments that are submitted. And of course, the zoning, zoning board comments from, from the board. We'd like to basically incorporate all of those and then address all of them at once. So, you know, not, at this point in time, I'm not going to go through all the comments that we've received to date and how we're planning on addressing them. We'd like to basically take care of all those at one, at one time with a, you know, with a resubmit of information or, or changes to the plans, whatever, whatever that may be. But I just wanted to let you know that we haven't ignored comment letters. We, we plan on addressing them and along with any comments we received today. Lastly, just wanted to mention that the site has been staked out. As of last week, we staked the center line of the roadway. And then the, the boundaries of the lots, the, all the lot corners, the front and back, and a few, few stakes online here. And then the lot corners in the back have all been staked out for viewing of the, of the board if you feel necessary. So basically, that's it for my presentation. I'll open it up to questions unless anybody else has anything to add or at this point? Nope? Okay. So I'll just open it up for questions or comments.
Questions from the board, Frank, start with you.
Well, thank you for that, sir. I have a couple of questions. I'll probably have a lot more once we get our department reviews and our peer review comments in. But one of the things I'd like to just take a look at is that the, what is the difference in elevation between the entrance at Route 28A and the top of the turnaround? How, how, how many feet is the, is the change in elevation there?
Yes, well, basically, the, the elevations at, at 28A are approximate elevation 46, okay? And then at the, where the cul-de-sac is, it rises up to the cul-de-sac, the final grade of the cul-de-sac, well, the, the existing grade at the cul-de-sac is going to be, is about 95. That's what the elevation is now. And that is proposed to be cut down to about 80, as you can see here. Seventy, between 75 and 80 is what the final grades would be at the cul-de-sac. The existing grades, as you can see up here, about 95.
I saw your plan here where you have a road profile. And you did reveal and you discussed in your comments that the maximum grade on this is 10%. But that only takes care of the road. One of the things that struck me was that you have a lot of lots jammed around. I use the word jammed because I think you have really jammed them up there at the cul-de-sac. And what is the elevation or the, or this, or the grade of those driveways? I mean, some of those driveways are pretty long. And if they're kind of steep, it's going to make it very difficult to get to those houses. What, what kind of grades are you going to be expecting on those driveways?
Again, we've proposed to keep those as moderate as, as possible. I'll try to look on the grading plan here to see if I can see some elevations. But those would be, I think, at the reary end here, I can read a contour line of like 82, 83 back here. So the proposed contour grading is about 83 along the back lines here. So we're not proposing very steep driveway grades coming into the cul-de-sac. Where, as you can see, we're going to need a retaining wall along the back edge here to lower the grades of the site so that the driveway grades and the lawn grades are, can be at a reasonable steepness. We didn't want to ha, have driveway grades of 10, 12% rising up to it. So we kept those at a slightly less, less, less steep grades.
I don't think we'd like them either. What is the height of that retaining wall going to be?
Again, we haven't fully designed it, but the back property line elevations are about 100. So if our grades in the front are about 83, that's, you know, 15 to 20 feet. At the steepest part. And it'll taper down obviously at the ends.
So, okay, so now, did I hear you correctly? The cul-de-sac, by the time you get finished with all of your site preparation and work, is going to be at roughly elevation 80? Is that what you said?
Yes, yep. At the very, very back end of it, yep.
And what is the elevation of the property line as it goes along, parallel to Route 6, uh, Route 28?
Right in, like, in this area here. It's about a hun, the elevation of the, right at the property line is about 100. It rises up to maybe about 105, right where my cursor is here. And then it, it drops off to like 85 or so in this area here. So it's about 85 along the property line here and raises up to about 100, 105 here at the peak and then about 100 here. And the, this is a, a grade that goes down to the off-ramps. So in the off-ramps itself, like, right here is the elevation 80. So here and here would be about the same. And then there'd be a hill in between.
Taking into consideration the difference in elevations and you have a, you have a ridge there or a, well, some kind of an elevated feature. Will the houses be visible from Route 28?
No, I don't believe so, no. Because again, we're, you've got an elevation of 80 here, where my cursor is, and in an existing elevation of 100 here. So, you know, and then, then we drop down. So you'll have this 50 feet of wooded area that's basically a hill that will block the views of these residences right along here.
So the residents probably won't be able to see the highway then, is that your assumption?
Yes, yeah, they, no, they, that's, they'll have the retaining wall back there. But they, again, they won't be able to have a visibility of the highway. And again, the highway's out here, this is the, just the off-ramp.
Okay, a couple more questions at this point. You were aware, we got a letter from the Buzzards Bay Coalition? Did you see that?
Yes.
Okay. And they mentioned Crocker Pond and Herring Brook. And you, you were so very good to provide us with a distance of 500 feet to Crocker Pond and 22,000 feet to Herring Brook. But you don't have a plan that shows the location or the relative location of those. Can you kind of describe where Crocker Pond is relative to your site and Herring Brook? In what direction and?
I guess on the site plan I can show you, right here up in the locus. This is, shows the, the site. And this is Crocker Pond right there.
Okay. And where is Herring Brook over there?
Herring Brook, I honestly do not have a plan that could, that shows where that is, but it's to the northwest of the site. You know, it's about, like I said, about 2,000 or so feet to the northwest of the property. I don't have a, a locus that shows exactly where that is.
Okay, well, just point out that they're very important, I think, to the town of Falmouth because we just spent several million dollars to get a discharge permit for our wastewater treatment plant, which is in the vicinity of this, to make sure that there's no nitrogen entering those bodies of water. All right. Now, you have a number of individual septic systems on some of the lots. And I looked at sheet number four of five for your preliminary utility plan.
Yes.
Concern I have is that these septic systems are in the backyard. And it looks to me like it's going to be very difficult to access them if they need to be pumped, if they need to be repaired, if they need to be replaced. And that one at the upper right-hand corner on Lot 12, looks to me like it might be just totally inaccessible. How are you going to deal with that?
Well, again, based, there is room between each of the houses to get machinery back there if, if need be. It's not a lot, but there's basically over 10, I think, 10 feet separation at minimum between these two to be able to get machinery back there. Won't be, it's not ideal, but that's.
But that means crossing property lines.
Possibly, yeah.
All right, I don't have any more questions at this point.
Mark? Actually, Frank touched on most of mine, but your estimates of the grade, I mean, you, you've got the cul-de-sac here at 115. And the difference between that and the 80 feet you said is, is 35 feet. How much you plan on taking off the top of this thing? This is right on top of that rock moraine that goes from West Falmouth to Sandwich. You guys need more than a fistful of dynamite on a bad day.
There is, there is going to be some earthwork on, on the project.
I'm not worried about the earthwork, I'm talking about the rock work.
Again, we haven't done.
You don't have any familiarity with what's under there, especially 30 feet under?
Right, we haven't.
Because that's what, it looks like you're taking 30 feet off the top of that to agree with the numbers that you just gave Frank. And I just question if that's even possible, but.
I guess, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, the.
You got 115-foot contour in the cul-de-sac.
Not sure what I did or if I did anything. Okay, sorry about that. But the, the existing grade at the center of the cul-de-sac is 95 and the proposed grade is 80. There is, it does get steeper in this back or corner where the, where the hill is. So that's probably where you're looking at, the contour lines a little bit higher, right?
Yeah, well, it looks like you got 110-foot contour in the cul-de-sac roughly, or damn near. I mean, it's, it's a lot, you might run into some problems there.
Well, we haven't done test pits on this property yet or any geotechnical work. You know, that would be one of the things we do, obviously, prior to final design work. You know, at this point, we haven't done, doesn't, haven't done that work. It's more of a construction issue, so.
Yeah, well, that's a lot of rock out there. That's all I got for now, but you might be in for some problems.
What's that?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, a couple of these, maybe you're going to piggyback on some of the comments that Mr. Duffy had. For your standard septic systems on lots that can actually have a individual septic, are these going to be standard Title V's or denitrification systems?
Standard, yep.
And, I mean, I'm looking at the lot size and the comparisons here. You've got lots from 4,000 to 11,000 square feet. Duffy indicated what could happen if, if you'd be pumped or otherwise worked on. Are you going to have enough reserved space if one fails and has to be dug out?
Yeah, I mean, the, the design that you see here is a trench system. That's, that, and these are sized for a three-bedroom house. And so that trench system, the reserve areas are located between the individual trenches. The final design, if it's a, a field or some other type of design, we would, the Title V requires a, a reserve area to be proposed. So we'll, but on this plan, the way we've got it laid out, the, the reserve areas would be in the trenches in between the, the primary trenches there.
The common septic systems, you've had gravity fed, you said you've got the topography for that. How are they going to be held in terms of, in the event of maintenance and upkeep?
Um, but I would.
Established in terms of maintenance requirements or assessments?
I mean, I would assume the development's going to have to have some type of an association put together that takes care of that, as I know. But that, because that's, they will, you know, on a, any common system that's proposed by Title V, we need to provide those type of documents to make sure that when the Board of Health approves it, that they know that it's going to be owned and maintained by, by some entity. And so we'll have to provide that to the Board of Health when we, when we get to the final septic permit application for those. But there would be, I'm assuming there'll be an association of the homeowners of those lots that are. But there would be, I'm assuming there'll be an association of the homeowners of those lots that are utilizing it.
You're proposing construction on slabs, so no basements at this point?
That is correct.
Uh, H O A, so homeowners associations gonna be responsible for road maintenance, upkeep in common areas. Uh, where do you anticipate garbage, uh, who's gonna be first responsible for garbage collection here?
That I, we haven't looked into. Um, I guess whatever is typical in this part of the town, I.
Don't expect all the answers, that I've just, broad strokes, just asking, um.
We'll do, yep, that's a good question, though.
Storage of garbage cans or receptacles. These lots are pretty tight and on top of one another.
Okay, let's, we'll look into that with the architect and the applicant.
Uh, sheds has been an issue that continues to come up with forty Bs with high density. Uh, is there a plan to, to have a shed or something, you're not gonna have a basement, or people are gonna be expecting to keep their lawn mowers, bicycles and so on in the garage area or elsewhere, so I appreciate some feedback on that.
Okay.
Uh, what are you gonna do in terms of, uh, snow plowing, removal and storage of snow in the wintertime?
Um, basically, the, the roadway would be obviously plowed, plowed, um, in a linear direction off. And from my understanding, most of the, uh, snow plowing that's done in the town, it, it's just pushed to the sides. There is areas that are, that, uh, at the front where s- snow could be stored. Any excess, we'd have to be, honestly, it'd have to be removed. But, uh, basically, I think we're just gonna have it in the front of the, on, on, on the sides of the roadway, and then at the entrance. There is some area in the center of the cul-de-sac also, uh, that's gra- uh, that's, I'll show you on the. That's a green area here that would be, uh, suitable for snow storage.
I guess the final question, which is usually what the butters kinda wanna get to the, get to the point, is any, any discussion about reduction in the number of units to? You have a lot of, lot going on here. At this point.
Understood, um, that is, uh, not my call. But we'll, we'll, uh, discuss it with the applicant.
Thank you.
Um, where is the open space?
Uh, that would be.
For kids?
That would be, uh, located, we have an open space lot right here.
But that was guest parking a minute ago.
Yes, there's a guest parking lot right here in gre- uh, gray that I was showing.
And two spots.
Uh, yes.
For twenty-four houses.
Yes.
So no Thanksgivens won't be happening up there. And so the kids playing is in the guest parking?
If there is any, uh, no, there's, and then, there's, this'll be a, a green grassed area right here. It has to be a level area due to the, uh, septic system underneath. So that'll, that, we thought that that would be, uh, a nice, I guess, dual use for that particular area. To have a level, you know, grassed area for walking dogs or whatever out in that area too.
And I did read in this, um, binder that you're promoting Bourne Farm across the street. Um, I feel that's gonna be a traffic issue, 'cause kids might just go across the street, and you've got an exit ramp coming off the highway there. And people might, might not be expecting kids to be running across the street. And you're having the kids playing on the highway right there. And I feel that's a problem with traffic. I wouldn't want my kids playing on the highway, the, the kids area should not be on the highway. I feel.
Well, I think we could p- propose, uh, some visual barrier in terms of, uh, either a fence or vi- or landscaping along that edge to create, uh, a barrier, a visual barrier, barrier there.
And what are you doing for mail?
I don't know if that's been determined yet.
Okay, and you don't know if there's gonna be blasting or anything to get rid of this hill? We don't know that yet.
Uh, I mean, honestly, don't anticipate it, um, but I do know there are areas of, especially near highways, where there's rock, um, as members of the board had mentioned. Um, but whether or not it's a situation where you have to blast, I seriously doubt it. But again, we haven't done any geotechnical work, uh, in that, in that, in that particular area yet.
It's just some older homes around here, especially the one right below there on the highway, and, and you, we can't have foundations shaken.
Understood, yeah, and I, again, if, there's a lot of requirements and regulations we would have to follow if blasting were to be required. You know, including pre-blast surveys of all the budding residences and everything, uh, so we would, you know, it obviously would have to be in, in, done in accordance with all the state regulations, if for some reason it was required, we, we would have to follow all those regulations.
Okay.
Tony?
Thank you, um, are any of the proposed homes gonna be in the historic district?
Um, I believe.
It goes back a hundred and fifty feet, I believe.
Is it, yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask, um, basically, the, the hundred and fifty feet is about right here.
Where?
Where my cursor is.
Drainage pit.
Alright, so none of the proposed homes will be in the historic district then?
Is, uh, no, if I, I didn't, again, this is a rough measurement here, but I believe a hundred and fifty feet's right about this location.
Because I think it's very important to keep that in mind.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we are very proud of the historic districts in this community, and we wanna maintain them. With regard to natural buffers, I mean, let, let's face it, this is a grossly more offensive use of this land than would be as by right. I mean, grossly offensive compared to what we could do by right. So, we have to consider a lot of things here. One of those, because of the density that you're proposing, is a buffer zone, right, which is almost impossible on this piece of land. But there's existing natural buffer now, I haven't been able to walk the site yet, I, I plan to do that. Uh, but how do you plan to buffer the properties on the left and the right? This is gonna affect them tremendously.
Um, again, we haven't looked at that, um, in terms of, as you can see, we're up against property lines in several areas here. Uh, but we can look into some landscape buffers, uh, some plantings perhaps. Uh, again, we have not investigated that in any detail.
I, I'm gonna suggest that you look at that very, very carefully about buffering on both sides.
Uh, you know, I would, would note that there, these, the properties on either side are wooded or undeveloped. They're not, there's no houses on, you know, in, in those locations.
I'm only concerned about your property right now. And I, I'll leave that, because we've got many, many weeks and months to discuss many different things here. How many gallons, once this is all built out, how many gallons per day of wastewater do you think the, uh, these houses will produce? Six thousand? Seven thousand?
Uh, yeah, I've got that number here for s- let's see. So for, e- each of the lots being three, uh, three-bedroom units, a hundred and ten gallons a day per bedroom, it, it comes up to a total of, uh, seven thousand nine hundred and twenty gallons per day. Um, that would split.
So you're definitely, you're under the ten thousand dollar, ten thousand dollar, yeah, ten thousand gallon per day mark.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't need a wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
But we have, I think this was mentioned earlier, we have a very, very serious situation in town here with, uh, nitrogen load being added to our waterways. I see that you have made, or given no consideration to our waterways in this. You're using standard Title V septic systems, you're not even proposing to use denitrification systems. Yet you're within five hundred feet of, I think, Crocker Pond, and then we have a cranberry bog, uh, we have several other ponds in waterways. Will you give more consideration to a denitrification systems for each house? I know they're expensive, and I know they have to be maintained, but this is very important to this community.
Mm-hmm, well, I mean, what I can say now is that, based on the regulations and bylaws that are in place right now, the stan- uh, the advanced treatment denitrification systems is not required by any regulation or law that's in place right now. And that's why we're proposing just the standard system.
And I, and I, thank you, and I did ask the question knowing that.
Understood.
Exactly, what I'm asking is, will the property or the developer consider denitrification systems for this project? Because again, we have a very big prob- problem in this town about nitrogen load, and we have very sensitive waterways. Not even to begin to mention the Buzzards Bay estuary.
Mm-hmm.
Area in which you have that letter, um, from the Buzzards Bay Coalition. And I think that's gonna be very important, well, I can only speak for one board member, me, that's certainly important to me on this whole matter. So I just bring that up, because it's gonna come up again, I guarantee you that.
Um, understood.
Were you, uh, were you ever approached by a preservation group to buy this land from you?
Uh, you'd have to ask the property owner.
Alright, no, I, I just, I read it someplace, and I just wanted to confirm, or that you were, you did not. So no preservation group ever approached you to buy this, uh, and pay you for the, uh, what you paid for it? The sewer line systems that you're installing in the roadway, uh, to lead to the various, um, leaching fields, will they be sufficient at some point in time to, uh, handle sewerage once? Because this town's gonna have to eventually go over to it, I mean, it's just gonna, and why should the town pay for all of that? If we know today that these things might happen? Will the existing sewer line, I see it in your typical road cross-section, I know that for the leaching fields, will that system be sufficient, uh, for a formal sewer system once it is installed in this area, whatever that is? Or will the town be, somebody be held to pay for all of that someday?
Um, that, that's a, a good question. The, the sewer system that's serving these lots that bring it down to this, the common septic system, that would be designed as a, a, any typical sewer system, it, it would have to be to meet engineering standards, so. Um, so that, if sewer is ever brought out onto Route twenty-eight A here by the town, um, th- this portion of this proposed roadway would already have the infrastructure in place to, to tie in, uh, at that point.
I, I'd like to, not today, but obviously, we got a lot of time to talk about these things, and we have peer review to go through. But I'd like to have that somewhere in the back of your mind.
Mm-hmm.
As, uh, something I think is very, very important for the future. This town should not have to pay to sewer this site. I grant you, it's gonna be a homeowners association. And I'm taking a lot of time, but let me just point out something. This wall at the back of the lot, you've got a twenty-foot grade cut at least up along Route twenty-eight. And it's something like this back wall here, so this will be someone's backyard, is basically what they're gonna be looking at. However you do that wall.
Approximately, yep.
So you, so, this is about what somebody's gonna be looking at, if not higher. Alright, um. I, I, that's my questions for now.
Anybody have any follow-up questions?
Well, just, uh, up top in the cul-de-sac. Again, what if you run into nothing but solid rock up there? Do you have any, uh, secondary plan as to what you'll do with the septic?
Oh, in terms of the, the leaching field that's underneath there? Uh, uh, again, we don't anticipate, uh.
Really?
Solid rock, but we'll, um.
Are you any familiar with that area?
Yeah, if we do, again, we would have to either overexcavate that area, um, as required by Title V when, um, or, uh, adjust the, the grade of the, of the cul-de-sac and the septic system underneath it. You would need to have as, as a four-foot separation between the bottom of the system and, if we happen to hit bedrock there, for instance, you would need a four-foot separation from that to, to the bottom of the septic system. So if that is, for whatever reason, bedrock is hit in that area, we would need to have that separation, and it may, it may require adjusting that cul-de-sac a bit.
Or some tough digging. And then the, uh, second thing I noticed, uh, is, um, I just went into the front of the property, but, um, where you have the septic, uh, down in the front corner there with the play area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you drive back there, it looks suspiciously like, uh, an old dump, but that'll be excavated sufficiently enough, so if that is indeed the case, we're gonna know it. There's a boat sticking up there and some other junk, and you know how things used to be a hundred years ago, or whatever. I mean, everybody's yard was a dump, some were dumpier than others, but as I say, how you're gonna be excavating down there fifteen feet anyway, right?
Um, yeah, perhaps, I mean, typically, that's for a test pit for a septic system, that's about the depth we have to go.
Alright, so it'll turn up. Alright, that, that's all for now, we've got a long way to go.
Frank, you have a follow-up question?
Just, just two, um, at the entrance down on Route twenty-eight A, that's where any children who live there are gonna be, uh, picked up or dropped off by the school bus. Is there space down there for parents to queue up, waiting for them, uh, waiting for the bus or waiting to pick them up? And can they turn around safely without having to go out into the street?
Um, good question, we can incorporate something at the entrance here to, to allow that. Um, in terms of whether or not they'd be driving down there, uh, or walking down, uh, the sidewalk that's proposed. But we can look into, um, bus stop, uh, options and parking options down there.
Okay, I just have one question, I, I just wanna follow up on something, question that I asked earlier, and Mr. Petrucci just asked you, I think, a couple of minutes ago about, take a look, for example, at Lot sixteen. Where the, um, the house.
This one here, yep.
Seems to be right, just a couple of feet from the property line.
Mm-hmm.
And you're gonna have a twenty-foot retaining wall at that point? So the people looking out are gonna be looking up at a retaining wall?
Yep. Um, again, not ideal.
Okay, I just wanna know.
Understood.
Get into that, but I just wanna clarify that, thank you.
Any other presentation this evening? So procedurally, why don't we dispense with the, the few things we need to, and then we're gonna open up the public comment? So we need to request funding of our fifty-three G account for peer review. So just need a motion to do that?
Alright, motion.
Request to, uh, for the applicant to fund our peer review account for four thousand dollars, our fifty-three G account, that's.
Yes.
Duffy, second, by Mr. Fenner, I'll let you do the next one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Uh, I have a motion to authorize our zoning administrator to seek the services of a peer. I'll make that motion.
Well, I thought you said you were going to.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, Noreen, please reach out. And I believe, just talking about some future dates, I think that this is, we're gonna be requesting that the next hearing on this go to June twelfth, is that a good day for the applicant? That's where we can get you in. Alright, um, we'll finish with that. Public comment.
May I just ask?
Oh, I'm sorry, point. Duffy?
Um, we did receive a letter from the Buzzards Bay Coalition, which I think raises a very important issue. And the town has just been through a, a big exercise to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant. I would like that letter sent to the wastewater department for comment, because they are very familiar with all of the facts about what we have done to protect those particular bodies of water. And maybe we could even invite them to come tell us, because I, I think this is a very important issue that's been raised by that letter.
I'd also forward it to the Board of Health and CONCOM, just for comment as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree, yeah.
Public comment. People wanna queue up, that's fine too.
Good evening, my name is Laura Wilcox, I live at twenty North Falmouth Highway. I also have a comment, uh, that my neighbor, uh, Wayne Vincent emailed to my husband. So when I'm finished with my comments, if it's alright with the board, I'd like to.
Certainly.
Give Wayne's comment as well. I have to organize myself. Uh, I want to very quickly address, uh, a couple of discrepancies that I overheard during the board's, uh, comments and questioning. Uh, Mr. Morris, you were commenting on basements. Uh, I'd like to point out that the schooner floor plan includes basements, not just slab. I'd also like to point out that the. I'd also like to point out that the application on page two reports that the existing single-family house will be renovated to look like the schooner floor plan. However, in the plan that we see, there is no existing house anymore. My husband and I have owned our property at 20 North Falmouth Highway for the past 11 years. Our main concerns are the density of building, that this is not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. We're very concerned about stormwater runoff. The front of our property has a tendency already to flood in heavy rains. Water comes across North Falmouth Highway from the opposite side of the street onto our property already when it rains heavily. We're concerned about the maintenance of the catch basins that are proposed and whatever separating systems are proposed to prevent more flooding of our property. We're concerned about traffic from this proposed new roadway. The trip generator data you'll notice is based on the Trip Generation Manual 11th Edition 2021 for Land Use, published in 2021, which means the data is probably a couple of years older than that. We all know here that the instance of Amazon deliveries, Peapod deliveries, FedEx, UPS has absolutely exploded since 2020, and I'm concerned that these estimated vehicle trips don't take into account that increase in traffic that we see in our neighborhood because of home delivery services. We are also very concerned about noise. You'll notice that the roadway pretty much ends at my front door. We're concerned that basically clear-cutting this plot of land between North Falmouth Highway and 28 is going to just funnel highway noise into our bedroom. There is a waiver in the list of requested exemptions for trees. We think that this is going to be detrimental to our enjoyment of our property. That's all the comment I have. Oh, I have one more. I believe you should have received a written comment from Phyllis Lyttford from 15 North Falmouth Highway. Phyllis and I had a brief conversation this morning and she didn't realize that there's a requested waiver of Title 305, Tech 24B, Part A, which is about the width of the roadway for the first 200 feet of the road from the intersection. She is very concerned about the proximity of the proposed roadway to her lot lines, which would be here. She's also concerned about that. She didn't write it into her written comment, but she wanted me to mention it this evening. So, now I'd like to read the email from Mr. Vincent. Wayne and Pam Vincent are our neighbors. They're at number eight Burke Lane. Wayne wrote this to my husband this evening. He says, "My name is Wayne Vincent and I live at eight Burke Lane. I am unable to attend this meeting as I tested positive for COVID this morning. However, I have asked Mason Wilcox of 20 North Falmouth Road, Highway, to read my opposition to this Section 40B project being proposed by Mr. Robert Bina for the following reasons. I assume a comprehensive plan of development or a schematic study plan has been done. The commission will make such recommendations for the physical, social, governmental, or economic improvement of the district, as in their opinion will be in the best interest of the inhabitants of the district. As an inhabitant of the district, I cannot see any social or economic improvement of the district as described per Section 5 of Chapter 40B. Further, there is another 40B project within about a mile further down Route 28A. On strictly a personal basis, which probably has no bearing on this meeting, the entrance of the project is directly crossed from my ancestral property now owned by the Wilcoxes. I am also concerned about any septic system would have on the adjoining properties and the pond at Bourne Farm. While I am not an engineer, it would seem to me, building the proposed project on a hill, the septic water would slow flow into the pond. It reminds me of Otis Air Force Base and the pollution caused by the prop, caused to the properties nearby. At the moment, there may be no anticipated problems, but what about the years down the road? Thank you for listening to my thoughts and concerns. Sincerely, Wayne Vincent." That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Taylor. I'm the Executive Director of Salt Pond Areas Bird Sanctuaries. We own Bourne Farm, where Crocker Pond is. Just to, Bourne Farm and Crocker Pond have been mentioned a little tonight. I just want to, a couple of quick comments. Salt Pond is a nonprofit, private conservation group. We opened the property for the public to enjoy and enjoy this lovely, beautiful historic site, but occasionally it is closed. We have events that help us raise money for the cost of owning and maintaining it. And as such, we have nature programs to teach children about nature. As such, it is not to be considered recreation space for this development. There's also no sidewalks to it and there's no break-in stone walls, so it really would be very unsafe to have that be considered the open space, as was mentioned when I looked at the file in the office. I've also been informed that due to the location and the quantity of units proposed, that there will be this retaining wall. And I appreciate you mentioning the retaining wall. Again, there could be blasting. There is a marine trail there, there is rock there. It's a very, very rocky area. And I'd like it noted to the board that Bourne Farm is a historic building. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. It has significance to the town, the state, and the nation. It was the first, one of seven houses in Falmouth. And we do not want to see anything happen to that granite and stone foundation on that building. As such, I would hope that the applicant and the town would protect this treasure. And any blasting or anything, an engineer, a structural engineer would look at that ahead of time and afterwards and make sure that it's okay if blasting is needed. And as a nonprofit conservation group, we would not want to pay for that and not feel that that is fair for us to pay for, for abutting development. The septic system, I appreciate everyone's brought it up. I don't want to, you know, keep going on and on about it. I will say that I completely agree that this situation with the septic is very concerning. It's obvious from just listening to the presentation that there's too much density and the septic system cannot be done in a traditional form that should be done and it should be a denitrification system. At the end of the day, we've had serious issues with pollutants. Herringbrook is within the watershed. Herringbrook is on the Federal Clean Water Act as being endangered. There's a total maximum daily load that can go into it. And as far as Crocker Pond, which is another concern, it's even closer. Wing Pond wasn't mentioned and this is a very serious issue for the town. As was stated earlier, we have spent, the town of Falmouth and taxpayers have spent millions of dollars to try to clean up these waterways. And right now, I think I counted, there was only about 10 septic systems that would even go into Crocker Pond. You're almost tripling it with what's going to happen here. So, it's, it's very concerning and I would hope that the Board of Appeals would answer some of these questions and get back to us on what can be done to protect our historic buildings and water resources. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Quigg. Excuse me. And I live at five Burke Lane, North Falmouth, Mass, or West Falmouth. The deed is West Falmouth. Mailing address is North Falmouth. I don't have any of the facts that my predecessors have. I'm here as a neighbor. I'm not opposed to 40B. It's a reality in this town. But I will say, I built my home 24 years ago. It was a one-acre minimum lot requirement. We had to specifically locate our septic tank because of the rocks. And I wanted to mention, and my children took the school bus all through high school. And the vehicles, I just want to mention the speed. It's a very narrow road. You cannot put a sidewalk on that road. It is a historical district. People fly down that road in either direction. So, my concern is when I come out of Burke Lane, or even for the people coming out of here, particularly when they're making a left-hand turn going towards Thomas Landers, it's very concerning to me. You know, there's no keeping with the character of this neighborhood. And I don't even see any effort with slabs. What I've heard tonight, I'm, I'm very concerned. I wasn't aware of that. Building on slabs, 24 houses, that's six houses on the property that I, that I own. I grew up in West Roxbury. I had more frontage in the city of Boston than this road, which I just learned tonight as well. I had 60 feet of frontage and that was a requirement in the city, just an FYI. And so, I am here as a concerned neighbor. I'm not adverse to 40B. It is a reality, but not this number. And the septic systems, again, I've learned a lot tonight. I thank my predecessors. It's a really good neighborhood. We help each other out way too much. Very concerning. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for, for your time.
My name is Jennifer Dewire. I am also a neighbor. I live about four houses south of this development on 28A. The property that I rent actually sits a little tucked into the slope of the on-ramp to 28 South. My property floods. There's runoff from, from the slope and it's nothing compared to what this slope would be. Prior to moving back to Massachusetts, I lived outside of DC, saw a lot of tall retaining walls. I lived in California, outside of LA, and I saw a lot of retaining walls. And I lived outside of Boulder and I saw a lot of retaining walls. And once you give the okay for one, the next developer expects you to give that okay to the next and the next and the next. And I was just noticing as I was coming down 28 from the Bourne Rotary today, how lovely it is that when the trees leaf out, that you really can't see any houses along 28 because we are a small community. And if something like this goes in, I feel like I'm moving back to an area that starts as a village and turns into a city. I also hear a lot of brakes slamming on because of people slowing down to get off of 28 and take Thomas Landers exit. I hear a lot of brakes slamming on because of people using the exit to go on 28 South and people traveling so fast on 28 from the Thomas Landers on-ramp that they are honking their horns and they're slamming the brakes. The speed is very high on 28A. I also own the North Falmouth Cheese Shop. And again, it's becoming more and more common that as people are turning to go into a side street or into their driveway, that the traffic is honking because people are getting tired. The people that don't live here don't want to have to slow down for somebody that lives along that road. And I've witnessed over and over again how cars on Thomas Landers, turning north onto 28A, they only have their heads turned to the left to see if there's traffic coming from 28A South, heading north. And so, then they turn right very quickly. And I'd be worried that there isn't enough distance to avoid rear-end collisions for traffic going in and out of there. So, those would be my concerns. The water runoff, definitely, I see that would be a big, a big concern. But as one of my neighbors stated, the number of vehicles going in and out of there, if you figure two adult occupants would each have a car, if there's a teenager that's got a driver's license and has a car, we're talking 50, 70 cars that would be occupying space there, going in and out and in and out all day long. Those are just my thoughts.
Thank you.
My name is Dora Quinney. I'm currently at 25 Priscilla Street in T-Ticket in a winter rental. I'm here today to share about my personal experience with the housing crisis on Cape Cod, specifically in Falmouth, in support of this project containing six affordable housing units. I'm 29 years old. I am a mother to an eight-year-old boy. Second to that, I'm a professional. I graduated with my master's degree in criminal justice from Boston University and prior to that, my bachelor's in 2016 at Rhode Island College. I currently hold a profession as a probation officer with the Massachusetts Trial Court. I've worked in Fall River, Falmouth, and currently in Barnstable. In total, seven years with the trial court. I'm providing this information not only because I'm proud of my accomplishments, but to bring into perspective the population of the working and professional class here in Falmouth that have been struggling for six years with housing. I first moved to Falmouth in 2018 when I received a promotion, had two months to find housing. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to do that. That's when I was introduced to the term a winter rental. I moved into a winter rental in Falmouth and throughout I searched for housing. I submitted so many applications. Finally, I found year-round. I proceeded to live there for four years. At the four-year mark, my landlord notified me that he would be increasing my rent $1,000 from what I initially started at. Sadly, I would have said yes in a heartbeat if I would have known where I am today. Buying a house has always been a dream of mine and something I began to actively work towards in 2021. Seeing as this was my ultimate goal, I knew paying $2,300 a month would leave me with absolutely no wiggle room to save or even to live comfortably. I made a big sacrifice. I moved away from Cape with my, with my mother, an hour and 20 minutes away from Cape. I drove an hour and 20 minutes to and from work and my son was taken out of the Falmouth Public Schools that he loved so much. I decided to move back to Falmouth this August. I reached my down payment goal. I wanted my son to be able to be back in the town where we have grown to call home. I moved into a winter rental as it allowed me to have an affordable rent and also begin the home buying process. I quickly learned that the home buying process was out of the question if I wanted to stay in this area, unless of course, it was by the way of affordable housing, such as the six units in this project. Currently, my rental is up in June 1st. At this moment, I haven't found housing. And I would hope that you guys would definitely take into consideration accepting this project as it would help young professionals like me who do want to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Hi, it's nice to be here. I'm a neighbor. I live at 52 North Falmouth Highway. My husband and I moved here seven, about seven years ago. We had, we actually had winter rentals and we camped in the summer, so we know what that's like.
Can we just get your name for the record before we forget?
Stacy Jason.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry. Stacy Jason, 52 North Falmouth Highway. We understand what it's like. We had to find a home in order to live and camped for two summers before we were able to be in our home. That also being said, I am a landscape architect. I run a community design organization for environmental justice neighborhoods in the eastern Massachusetts region. I highly am eager to see affordable housing and those six homes be built there for people who need it in our community. I, however, see that the other 18 homes and the density are, like you said, grossly offensive. They're grossly offensive to me, to my neighbors, and to the land that we are all here for. I'd also like to call attention to the nature resolution that was passed by the town of Falmouth on April 22nd. And for those of you who have not heard it, I was incredibly proud of this town when the nature resolution was passed. It states, there's only a few nature resolutions in all of the United States. The resolution recognizing Cape Cod rights of nature is dated April 22nd by Nancy Robbins, Chair of the Falmouth Select Board. It's dated April 22nd by Nancy Robbins, Chair of the Falmouth Select Board. It does say here that whereas supporting the movement and aligning local law and policy with the understanding that nature capitalized must be respected as an entity with rights, will help protect Cape Cod and will assist in effectuation of our constitutional right to a clean and healthy environment. And so I really am encouraged by what I hear from, whether it's what the Buzzards Bay Coalition has written, our understanding of the watershed, or as I like to refer to it, as our life shed. I'd like to see more kids be involved in this decision-making, those children who will have the responsibility to manage the issue around nitrification of their waterways. Because this is actually an incredible case study for our town, to be able to balance both affordable housing and the rights of nature and be able to perhaps co-create and co-design a development that meets all of these beings' needs. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Lopes. I'm part of the--
Lopes is a Pauline Phillips' property right here.
I understand the need for affordable housing, and I appreciate it. Grew up, you know, needing-- my family built a house in Falmouth, and we needed government help as we got up, so we understand the challenges that a single family or even any family has to establish in Falmouth. I'm just concerned about the number of units that are on this property. And my also concern is, I know that somebody had mentioned about taking into consideration the direct abutters. Right now, you have one property owner that owns that property. So then, you have these small yards, you have-- excuse me. You have these small yards, and I'm concerned about potential encroachment outside of these lots. And I don't know if there's a way to maybe make a little bit of a boundary, just to make sure that people know where their property lines are. Some of these things are five feet from the property lines. I think that should be taken into consideration. A reduced amount of units, I think, would help a lot of these questions. I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the good topics that were brought up earlier that should be taken into consideration, but I'm very concerned about them being so small and these families not being able to enjoy their properties and potentially, you know, causing issues with the abutters, whereas in, you know, you've got tree lines that are very close. Maintaining those tree lines, if a tree is on the abutters property and it comes down on a house, I mean, without the setback of 15, or I'm not sure what the requirement is, but what the waiver is for, but some of these are five feet off. And then it puts the onus on the abutters to maintain these wooded areas that they haven't had to in the past. So I would really appreciate a consideration of reducing the amount of units because of all the items that were concerned earlier, I mean, that were presented earlier. Thank you.
Good evening. Maury Harlow-Hawks, 9 Old Dock Road, West Falmouth. There's a lot of pluses and minuses to all of these projects. We all know that, and that's what makes them so difficult. 29 waivers are being requested, and the explanation for all of them is, quote, "Dimensional requirements would restrict the number of lots and affordable units." That being said, it appears that this property is probably not conducive to such a dense build-out. And reducing this density could possibly prevent, or at least help, to reduce the waivers that are being asked for and would appease a lot of both sides. Would still have affordable and would have less density, with all the concerns that have been spoken of tonight. There are also 35 questions from the engineering department, which I'm glad that you're going to pursue, that need to be addressed. Because I didn't see anything for the way in for the Board of Health. And there is a Sagamore Water Lens. It's not just, you know, we all think it's just us, but there's another water lens. And the ponds, we've already started a freshwater pond committee. And I was glad to hear the engineer speak about his stormwater improvements and his containment of phosphorus and contaminants. But unfortunately, I don't see any of that in the septic plants. And we are going to be headed, we all know, into denitrifying single residents. West Falmouth will probably be in North will be one of the few that won't get it because we aren't as dense as Great Pond over, you know, by Washburns and all that. So it's a challenge. The denitrifying systems are very costly to the developer, and that's why they prefer not to do them, even though it's probably the right thing to do. They, it's, but it is very costly. And I can understand their concerns, but I also understand the concerns of the environment. And I didn't see anywhere in there where DNR, or now the environmental, the Town Environmental Group weighed in on the wildlife corridor. This lot, we all know, I call it the Roskowitz property, but it was, it's right up before the North Falmouth Rotary that they just did the 40B there. And I hope that this group looks closely at that, the challenges that they had. And they really had serious challenges due to the topography, almost identical to this lot. Up a hill, constant washouts. They did this, it's pretty much a mirror. They did the joint septic down at the bottom, some up at the top, some individual. They're still having challenges with that property after they denuded it lot-line to lot-line, which will have to happen to this one in order to get the density that they're requesting. That being said, you can't shoehorn so much in, and I just wish that there'd be more of a compromise. And I understand the affordable housing issue. And for this young lady that has, you know, has worked so hard to come back here, one thing that people have to realize with 40B, it doesn't go to the lovely people of West Falmouth, or North Falmouth, or East Falmouth. It goes into a lottery. And God bless all of you that go into the lottery, that live here and want to be here and should be here because you work here. You don't get the house. Somebody from Athol, Mass. gets it. And that's the saddest part of it all. If we could put on this that the six units went to Falmouth residents only, but I'm not sure that can be done. And I don't think it can be, from what I've seen through all the regulating of it all. And that's the sad part, that we're not helping the people in our town. We're helping anybody in Massachusetts that goes in the lottery. And I just want to clarify that to that young lady, because it is sad that you don't get that opportunity, and you should. And that being said, a couple things, the stone, I really, Mr. Pena, is he native here? He knows. We have a lot of stone in West Falmouth and North Falmouth, and that moraine will be a challenge and put in very big cost on this project if they do have to blast. And the 20-foot wall, I really had the, I didn't really realize it until tonight's discussion, but that's beyond the top of the ceiling practically. And it's five foot off a house. And I just don't know how you can engineer it. And that's going to be something they're going to have to figure out. But a 20-foot engineered wall isn't, is like this pencil. It's going to have a huge footing, and I don't know if they're going to have to-- I don't know how they're going to do that, but I'm sure engineering, when you get your peer review, will figure that out. And the Bourne Farm, it was my family's farm. And I do have great concerns of the impact of Crocker Pond. It's one of the most pristine ponds that has been, somehow has dodged the bullet because the bunker zone on one side and Bourne Farm's on the other side. So there's never been dense development. There's five houses on Crocker Pond. So I just hope that maybe there'd be consideration to reduce this, and it's still affordable for the developer, still affordable for the affordable people, and the environment doesn't get sacrificed in all this, and the integrity and the beauty of West Falmouth. I still call it West Falmouth because it used to be West Falmouth. They changed the line. That area doesn't get changed to a point that all the neighbors are, you know, their value and quality of life is depleted or diminished. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Just as a reminder, if some types of people who've spoken forget to mention something, we will always accept written submissions to the file. The board does read everything. So I think-- Oh, sir. How much time would you like?
Well, you gave us until like 8:00, so I've got 20 minutes. I don't need all that. I'll take five minutes.
No, sir, that's fine.
Can I just, general, Mrs. Wilcox, I believe it was, brought up, and we deal with traffic reports all the time. And their data is from '21. And that's a very salient point that the Amazon Prime and all the delivery trucks have really affected the amount of traffic that's in and out. And I'm going to go home and hit myself with a stick, because I've spent hours and hours on a lot of these traffic reports, and that never occurred to me. And I have a neighbor across the street who has one of those trucks at least every day, sometimes twice and three times, and just as general knowledge and-- don't lose-- yeah, don't lose track of that and other issues as well, besides this address.
Floor is yours, sir.
I just want to kind of correct a few things. First of all, the guidelines from 40-- I'm sorry? Robert Pena.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to, I want to correct a couple of things that I heard that are incorrect. First of all, the way the lotteries work that are set up through Mass Housing Finance Agency, 70% of the people do come from anywhere, but people from Falmouth go other places too. In fact, I grew up in this town. And I'm hard-pressed to find people that I went to high school with, because they're living in other towns. So we get that responsibility as well. Number two, 20%, 20% of the units are reserved for people that have been living in Falmouth. Those are right in the regulations. And the woman said she looked at them, and I don't know how she missed that. But 20% of them are in the regulations. 10% are reserved for minorities. And that leads me to the signature on the Buzzards Bay Coalition. So I looked at the Buzzards Bay Coalition. These are people, they're top five people, and she's one of them, that all make six-figure salaries. So the person that signed that doesn't have a problem with affordable housing. Okay? So, but those people in Falmouth who are the minorities, they get to go in that pool, the 20% pool, and the 70% pool. The people that are the 20% folks who are people in Falmouth, they get to go in, if they're non-minorities, they go into the 20% pool and they go into the 70% pool. So it's not uncommon to have people from Falmouth living in these units. Now, if you look at the conservation land in this area, you've got three of the largest pieces of conservation land in town. You start with the Cadoza property, and they're all connected in the back by bike paths. And then it comes to the Bourne Farm property. These two properties are just short of 50 acres of land. Then you've got the other pond up there, that's got 19. You're looking at over 120 acres, 119 acres of conservation property. So how fair is that to the folks that live throughout the rest of the town? They've got this conservation property that other towns, other sections of town don't enjoy. Furthermore, there is not one affordable unit built in West Falmouth, period. That's a fact. This conservation land, I mean, excuse me, affordable houses built in Teeticket, East Falmouth, Falmouth, Woods Hole, West Falmouth, zero. Okay? I was the first developer to propose a affordable housing development in the town of Falmouth. And the resistance that I got from the folks in West Falmouth was unbelievable. Previous to that, I tried to, I successfully got a liquor license for a restaurant. I've had a problem with the place, but the resistance, again, was over the top. So I understand what these folks, what their concerns might be in the environmental and so on and so forth. But, you know, West Falmouth is going to take its turn in part of North Falmouth as well. North Falmouth's got four affordable housing developments. I looked into some of the comments from some of the, all the comments, I should say, from some of the departments that sent the stuff in. They said, "Well, there's no sidewalks on the outside." I went by nine developments, zero sidewalks, okay? One of them did have a sidewalk when I got to the 10th one. Those pitches on those roads that go up the moraine to Route 28, that's consistent with every single development on Route 28A. You drive up them, all you could do is drive up them and you'll see that. This is not an anomaly. It's a fact. People got to live somewhere. There's a lot of beautiful houses up there, tons of them. And one of the things you can look at is how many of these houses in West Falmouth have got denitrification systems right now? Let's look into that. Let's see what they've done. Some of these peoples in these committees, and some of these folks we've heard from, they could put denitrification systems in the house, but they don't do it. Why? Because of the cost. What it does is it does increase the opportunity for these kinds of developments to move forward. Some of the folks in this area of town have done a great job fighting back affordable housing in this part of town. That's a fact. There's a ton of conservation. The land has, the town has spent money on that conservation land. I provided a map. I provided a map in that book. If you look in there, you'll see all that conservation land, all there. You can't find that in another part of Falmouth, I don't believe. And then juxtapose it with the size of the homes in that area. There's a number of houses that have gone up and have just gone up recently without denitrification systems. It's, to me and my period, it's a red herring, okay? It's a red herring. They make it tough to make things happen there. Drive down 28A, look both sides and see what you see, compare it to the rest of town. That's my time. Thank you.
So we're looking at a continuation to June 13th.
June 13th or 12th?
12th. It's 12th, excuse me. Don't want to be around Friday.
Well, Friday's the 13th. Yippee.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds to finer. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. This hearing is continued till 6:12 at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everyone, for their comments.
It's the 13th.
6:13. Revised the motion, continue to 6:13.
What is your date now? The 13th or the 12th?
13th. No, it's the 13th. Can we have the clarification? We're still in session, ladies and gentlemen. Modification is to the continuation, please. Thursday is what date and--
It's Thursday the 13th.
Thursday the 13th.
No Friday.
Is that a friendly amendment to the result, to the motion? Why don't we take a recess until 8:00 PM, while we open up the next hearing? We'll come back in a session. We can't quite start. We're not quite at 8 o'clock yet, so we'll take up our next hearing at 8. Take one thing out of open meeting, out of order, voting minutes. We're going to be tabling the minutes of April 11th, May 2nd, and May 9th. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of March 14th, March 28th, April 4th, and April 25th? Any discussion, comments, or corrections on them?
I thought they were okay, so I moved their approval.
A motion to approve, is there a second? Give that a sound. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Those minutes are approved. Rent balances are tabled. Decisions, yeah, I did sign some decisions. About 60 seconds and we can start. We'll finish up open meeting after the conclusion. Unless you want to get your updates at this point, Noreen. Will there be any board updates?
No, I have none. Frank, when you're done, pass that down, will you?
This?
Yeah.
Any future agenda items that the board would like added for later meetings? Any board discussion?
Well, happy night, happy campus.
We'll take Noreen's update after, and it's 8 o'clock. So-- We'll take Noreen's update after, and it's eight o'clock. So, uh, second hearing this evening is zero four two two four, Acapescot Gardens LLC, zero Acapescot Road, Lot three ninety-eight, and zero Old Bayberry Lane, Lot five twenty, East Falmouth, requesting a comprehensive permit to construct six duplex buildings totaling twelve units, of which three units will be affordable.
No letters and information from, from the app.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Tim Santos from Merrill Engineers, and Lance Aveas representing the applicant. Also with me this evening is Nick Maroni, who prepared the application that was filed with your board, as well as the state. I'm going to open up the site plan, give you a quick overview, and then we'll ask for questions. So the project is located on Acapescot Road, approximately third of a mile down from Twenty-eight, and in this area here, on the western side of Acapescot Road. It is made up of two vacant lots, one on Acapescot and one on Bayberry. Um, it's approximately one point five acres in size. It's currently, as I said, vacant and wooded. What we're proposing before you tonight is to construct six duplex units, as shown on the plan. It is five two-bedroom units and then, I'm sorry, five, or ten two-bedroom units, and then there'll be one, one-bedroom unit and one three-bedroom unit. Uh, we're proposing twenty-four parking spaces throughout the site. Our entrance will be off Acapescot Road, as shown on the plan before you. We'll kind of loop around and then come back out onto Acapescot. Uh, we have provided a Exhibit Plan Two that shows a fire truck turning movement can get around our circle here. As far as drainage, we are proposing, uh, drainage that meets the state's standards. All the roof runoff will go to filtration structures, uh, drainage units adjacent to the homes. As far as the road runoff, we have one, two, three drainage basins that will collect the road runoff, treat it, and then any high storms will overflow into subsurface drainage structures that are highlighted in the tan color. Um, the site will be serviced by Town Water. We'll be tapping into the Town Water on Acapescot, as shown here. Um, at the end of the line, we'll have a fire hydrant. The water department has made a comment that they would like us to loop around the circle here, and we will make that change on a future plan, as I'm sure there'll be more comments from other members, uh, referrals, as well as the peer review. The site will be serviced by an onsite sewage disposal system. Each of the units will tie into a series of manholes and collection lines that will drain from the western end of the site down to Manhole Four, adjacent to Acapescot Road. Uh, this was done, so when the sewer line comes down Acapescot Road, we could just run a new line out and just tie right into that sewer line. Um, for now, it'll drain to the series of septic tanks, a pump chamber, and then under the island, there'll be a pressure-dosed leaching field. That's pretty much it. In a nutshell, I will show you the landscape plan, just to review that quickly, and then turn it over to Nick, and he can address any, uh, review the concept of the filing application, then we'll address any questions you have. We just recently submitted the landscape plan before you tonight. Here is a copy of it here. Um, basically, the units will have landscaping in front of each of them, as well as some tree, proposed trees between the units, along the roadways, to provide some vegetation. We're also providing trees and privacy fencing along the property line, not only for the privacy of the proposed homes, but for the adjacent, uh, properties. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Nick and then address any questions you might have.
Just to take it a little bit further, which, how do I get to the next one? The, uh, unit plan. Oh, I need my glasses. Where's the unit plan, Tim?
You can scroll up. Go back to the other one. Go back to that one, and then just scroll up on the, uh...
Where's the, uh, unit plan?
Oh, the individual unit?
Yeah. Get down on this.
No, no, I just got a... You want the, the architecturals or the...
No, I want the...
Collar one?
Yeah, the buffer, and turn it. Okay, sorry about that. So this is, this is where we did, took a building and showed how we're creating private spaces for the individual units, uh, because the, the trash pickup is gonna be tote, to pull totes. So the, as they come out their side door, they'll have a little private patio area with some fencing. The pull totes will be there. They'll take them out to the curb once a week, and we only have a very short distance behind the buildings to the property line. That's why we chose to do it this way, so as not to put the backyard of the unit right on the property lines with the, uh, abutters. And this details the landscaping for each unit, which you don't quite see on the large plan. So, uh, the two-bedroom units are seven hundred and eighty-four square feet. The one-bedroom is five sixty, and the three-bedroom is one thousand eight square feet. They're all single-story, one bathroom, full basements, two parking spaces per unit. So, uh, I'm ready for questions, if you have any.
Tony, start with you.
Thank you. Um, I'm just looking at this landscape plan, this one copy we just got, and, um, again, this is a, um, and I, and I understand forty B. It's not as though I don't understand forty B. It's another one of these, um, tremendously offensive uses of the land versus what is by right, all right? It's, it's a densely packed area, uh, and the community around it needs to be, have some type of buffer around it. I can't tell by looking at this, but I think I see, since I'm looking at it for the first time, a sixteen-foot, it says sixteen-foot, you know, fence, I'm not sure if it's sixteen feet of fence, or it's continuous fence around the property. Can you tell me that?
It's not continuous. It's, it's broken up. Let me see if I can... So what, what we did is we put two eight-foot sections behind each unit, and in between, we used evergreens, just so it didn't feel like a prison for the residents there.
Yes.
But it did provide buffering for us and the abutters.
Yes. And how, I'm sorry?
And we submitted the plan today, because we met with the residents, uh, recently and took their concerns and put them on the landscape plan, because they had buffering concerns. So that, we wanted to incorporate those. We, we think, we think we've got a pretty good buffering plan here for us and the neighbors.
So, this, this plan, again, that I'm seeing for the first time in heaven, had an opportunity to digest, we're talking about two to two and a half foot, well, it says caliper. I don't think you have two and a half foot caliper trees.
Two and a half inch caliper, yeah.
It's, oh, it's inch, all right.
Yeah, that's the diameter of the tree.
Yeah, 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 it's a little bit, all right.
Which is, which usually is like ten to twelve feet when planted.
All right. Um, I'm a little concerned. So the plan shows that you have the community garden over your stormtack drain system. Uh, so is this community garden gonna be erased? Garden bedders are gonna be sitting around on top of the stormtack system?
It should be at grade.
I, I, I don't disagree with that, but the storm, what, what's the depth of the storm? These honey, these beehive-type systems, what's the top of the beehive system below grade?
It varies throughout the site, but somewhere between two to three feet in depth.
So you consider that to be adequate depth, so that people just digging around aren't going to disturb that system?
Correct.
That's interesting. Um, this area, uh, I believe is in a coastal pond overlay district, and, you know, you may have heard us bring up the concerns about nitrogen, uh, discharge. Uh, we have a, I, I think you are well aware that we have a tremendous problem in this town with this. There's no sewer here. Uh, you're in a sensitive area. Uh, how many gallons of wastewater per day, once this is all built out, will this produce? Do you know?
I do know, but Tim will tell you.
Twenty-five hundred. It's, uh, two thousand six hundred and forty gallons per day.
That's the total for all of these?
Correct.
Two thousand, how much?
Six hundred and forty gallons per day. Twenty-four bedrooms, I believe.
And, um, have you, I know the answer, but, I mean, have you considered denitrification systems for this project?
We did talk about it. Um, it is part of the, because it is part of the town sewer project, I believe within the next five years. That's why we talked about with the design, and I mentioned earlier, all the flow from the site will flow by gravity out to the street, so it'll be an easy connection once that sewer line comes in.
So the sewer line that you, that will go to your primary leaching field, um, that sewer line, which will, and I don't have construction plans that I can clearly read, but that sewer line will, uh, eventually be able to be used, to be connected to a new sewer line?
So this, if you can, if you just look up the screen for one second, please, this sewer manhole here, right, sewer manhole four, okay? Everything's gonna flow by gravity from the western side of the site, collect down through sewer manhole one, two, three to four, and then from four, you would be able to go straight out to the street and tie into the, the proposed sewer that would come down Acapescot.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize for not knowing when we might be searing this area. Do you know when that, that's gonna happen?
He said five to six years. It's on the next, next page of the sewer plan for us to hold and call for a checkup.
So, in your opinion, uh, the town of Falmouth will not, the folks here in town are not gonna have to pay to sewer your area, that the sewer lines you put in will be adequate for the flow to a new town sewer line?
It is designed to tie into the town sewer when the town sewer comes by.
I appreciate that. One last question, and I, I, I just have to ask, um, where you're going to increase the density, because forty B allows you to, in this area, and you're gonna affect this area, did you ever read the mass housing design guidelines with regard to how it's built, uh, how you design the properties? Have you ever read that?
I would let Nick answer that question.
I have used it as a ref, I haven't read it like a book, but I have certainly used it as a reference in the amount of time I've been doing this.
Believe me, it's not enjoyable to read.
I know, it's not, but it is a good reference, man.
But it is a good reference, and, um, I, I'm just wondering if we could get away from the Otis Air Base nineteen forties look and maybe give the folks in town something a little bit more presentable, uh, for designs, maybe a higher pitch. I don't know what the pitch roof is on these things, but, again, you're, you're increasing the density and the use of the land, and, um, it really kinda looks like something right out of the nineteen forties. Now, there's a two-family out on Acapescot Road that was built in nineteen forty, looks just like this, but the design guidelines suggest that you might kind of consider something different.
Well, we, you, you're looking at a, a site plan.
I'm looking at the homes, the, the elevations.
You have the, you have the elevations here as well?
I'm looking at them.
Okay, so we, we think that they're gonna look pretty good. We can do some things to make them look okay. It is affordable housing, so we're trying to not spend the money and make it less affordable.
And I, and I understand that, and I, and I'll finish, Mr. Chairman, pretty quickly here. I understand that, but you're creating something that will be here in town long after, I'm, I'm around, but this is business, I get it, I understand, but we need to create some kind of legacy when we build things in town here, so that the others that come after us have something they can appreciate. I'm gonna leave that, but I do recommend, I'm not gonna read, I brought, I could quote the guideline books. I'm just gonna suggest that you look at, you read the prologue of the guidebook, you read page seven, the building topog, uh, topography, topology, and a few other areas. It might help you in considering moving forward on this with design. I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
And I, I hear what you're saying, but it is numbers-sensitive, of course. It's numbers-sensitive. They have, the numbers have to work.
I understand that.
Well, where is guest parking?
Uh, there actually is none. It's twenty-four parking spaces for twelve units. We, so the thought was that if we had to, and we hope we don't have to, add guest parking, we could put, uh, a couple of spaces in here and a couple of spaces over in here, but we really wanted to leave that. You see, we sort of fenced that in and left it as a play area and a place where the parents can go and sit at a bench and watch the kids kick a ball around or whatever, and a little fence to keep the ball in. Not a solid fence, but a post and rail to keep the kids from running out into the travelway, and, but it's a pretty good-sized area, so we could, if we needed the parking later, uh, throw a couple of, uh, guest parking spaces in, in there.
What about the lower-left corner? That looks, I mean, you could fit something in
Talking about over here. We have, we have parking all along here now.
No, down on the, lower-left, on, um, I don't know if it's south. Yeah, right there.
Uh...
Or maybe...
Well, we got some drainage in there.
You gotta have guest parking somewhere. Nobody can just never have company.
We can, we can look at that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
We might be able to move the, the play areas over here.
Yeah, maybe down that corner, maybe? I, I don't know. And where, what about snow removal?
Uh, we, we got all that covered with, uh, places to put the snow off to the end of the parking areas. We, we could, uh, we, we could move the play area over to here. We originally had it over here, and use this for guest parking.
I think it would be better to have the kids in the corner, yeah. And then you're gonna, are you gonna have mail, like, in a, in a stand-up thing?
Yeah, there's a mail, mailbox down here, mail area, right, right there. So gang mailbox for the twelve units.
So all the Amazon and all those things will just go up there?
Yeah, those boxes will go there, yeah.
All right, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Nick, uh, these are gonna have basements, correct?
Yes, they do.
I'm not seeing any interior access, is that correct?
There is not.
So, uh, extra access to the bulkhead, all right.
We have storage questions, then.
Yep.
Sorry.
You addressed the issue with the garbage and the pull-out totes, and so are you gonna have any sheds or anything for people to have storage for bicycles, yard equipment, things they might take up to the common garden?
We, we did not plan on any sheds. We, we figured they'd use the basements for storage.
Okay.
And, of course, there should be no reason for them to get down there if we could put the electric meters on the first floor, I mean, in, in a, in a bad storm, say.
So these are all rental properties, correct?
Yes.
And have you, would you be willing to give any credence to, what are your plans, I guess, for the market rate units in terms of leases? Are you looking at one-year leases or are you looking...
Well, we've, we've actually filed with the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to make them all affordable.
Okay. Well, I know they're gonna be counted as, on the S.H.I., because they're rental properties. Um, would you be agreeable to the condition to make the leases one-year, minimum one-year leases?
Oh, they, they are.
Okay.
They're one-year leases, and then they renew for a year.
Okay, yeah, perfect. I'll have extra questions, I'm sure, after peer review and such. Mark?
Um, the, the guest parking was, uh, my, uh, the, the first time I saw you was the last time you were here, and you came back for, for Meadow, because you didn't plan on guest parking, and it's, was obvious, and I don't see this as any different, so you might as well nail that down now.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah, and the, uh, the other thing I have is the, uh, the three- And the, the other thing I have is the three and the one are going to be the affordables?
No, the, there'll be, the one-bedroom and two-twos will be affordable, but we are intending to make them all affordable.
Well, you won't find any objection here for that.
Well, I hope not.
That's all I have for the moment.
Frank?
This will be rental property, so how are you going to manage this property? Who's going to be in charge? Who's going to take care of it? Who's going to be responsible for repairs and maintenance? How's that going to be handled?
Well, it's the same owner as Brick Hill Place. And on Brick Hill Place, I do the administrative management, the tenant lease-up, tenant relations, insurance, approve the bills and get them paid. We have a bookkeeper that we've been working with for years, and the owner does coordinate the maintenance. So the residents have emergency numbers they can call for mechanical emergencies, electric, plumbing, and HVAC. And if they have, for instance, a smoke detector that goes out, they just call us routinely. If it's an emergency, like the stove goes out at dinnertime, they have a number they can call for the electrician. But we've got it all covered through the owner, myself, and the bookkeeper. And it's been working very well at Brick Hill.
Okay, so if it's just going to be associated with Brick Hill, am I right to assume that the management services will be local, located in Falmouth?
Yeah. I mean, my, I live in Falmouth, my office is in West Bridgewater, but I'm here every afternoon, and I, you know, all the tenants have direct access to me, so.
Kind of interested in finding out, you have a community garden. I know from experience that I've had, they'd be kind of hard to manage themselves. How are you going to control that, and who gets what part of it and what they can use?
Good question. Good question, it's something we're going to have to deal with, you know. Either, if you get people that are interested in using the garden and it becomes a problem, we'll have to start to dictate space. If they can get along and use it, two or three people want to use it and grow vegetables, fine. I don't know if they can work it out.
Well, I know that everybody thinks it's a good idea, but in practice, sometimes it's problematic. If somebody wants to grow pumpkins, they can take over the whole place real quick.
Well, that's a very good point. Maybe we need to address that in our rules and regulations.
Well, better to address it first, rather than have problems you've got to solve on the fly as you're going forward. But anyways, thank you.
Any follow-up questions from the board?
I have one. I really want, I think it's through Tom, to address the storage. I don't think you want kids going down bulkheads to get their bikes. I don't think that's going to work. Just, just check it out, anyway.
Well, yeah.
I mean, people might have kayaks, they might have other stuff. I mean, there's nothing, except for a basement, which I appreciate. I mean, that's where I would put my luggage, but I wouldn't want my kids going down there and lugging stuff out, and I just wouldn't. So, just check it out, anyway. If you can fit some, maybe a storage unit somewhere, or, I don't know.
Well, after what I've heard about the community garden, I might consider a storage unit in the web.
All right, so just to dispense with a few procedural things, is there a motion to request the developer to fund the 53G account to obtain peer review?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Thinner, and any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Kind of a motion to allow the zoning administrator to retain that peer review after funding of the account?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. This hearing after tonight will be continued to Thursday, June 13th. Is that a good day for you, till 8:00 PM? Hopefully by then we'll have our peer retained, we'll have some comments and feedback. Did you retain, get any feedback on this one? I did have a chance to pull the file up from town boards.
I don't think so.
Yeah, we'll continue to the 13th of June.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a time? Time-specific, or just that night?
So we have another 40B that's going that night, so we're starting one at 6:00. We're going to start you at 8:00.
Eight again, okay.
8:00 PM.
Want a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Motion to continue to 13th.
Is there a second?
At eight.
8:00 PM.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're not closing, we're going to, don't worry. Want to make sure people have the opportunity to comment tonight.
Can you have peer review comments by now?
Probably not, but I'm sure there will be some other things that come up, so. Hopefully, maybe we'll come back to address, once you hear some of the comments from the butters and so on. So we'll turn this over to public comment. Damn, good evening.
Hi, I'm Diane McElroy, Old Bayberry. And we already talked about this, and you said you were considering, just for those of us that's, development is coming right up to our backyard for sound and privacy and all the rest, to consider both a hedge and a wall. It's a tight area, it's a lot of housing. We're estimating 24 cars, additional cars. And also possibly, and this is, you know, way down the road, I guess, traffic light at the end of Acapescot, because right now, there's a lot of fast, hard traffic, a lot of accidents. We've replaced our mailboxes a couple of times, because they're out on the street, and it's just tough to get out on 28.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Joe Baker, Old Bayberry. Just like to ask that no construction vehicles or any other access during the project, or once it's completed, is allowed to be coming down Old Bayberry. It's a one-lane dirt road.
Is it a private road?
Yes.
Good.
And we also understand that there's the possibility, but maybe change of having the water main either come down Bayberry, but I think you indicated tonight that it's going to loop within the property. So, thank you.
Nick, let me ask a question. Why is there a concern that they, construction trucks would come down Old Bayberry Lane? Is there access to the property from there?
It's across the street.
You can get there.
Oh, you can get there, right. There we go.
Just quickly, we have, we do have, the address is zero Acapescot and zero Old Bayberry. So we do have access off of Old Bayberry, but we have no intention of using it, and we'd be happy with a prohibition from us using it. The only reason we thought we might have to is if the water department asked us to loop the water line back out Old Bayberry, but they didn't. Looks like it's going to loop it within the subdivision itself.
I do appreciate that you met with the people in Bayberry. I think that's great. I appreciate that.
Other public comment?
Hello, I'm Paul Glass, and I live on Acapescot, almost directly across from where the entrance will be for the, the development. I, I've got a couple of concerns. One, I'm going to just reiterate what Lady said earlier about providing a fence as a sound barrier on the abutting properties, both on the Acapescot side, and I'm just going to use here, but along that area here, and along this side of, on the Bayberry side. But more importantly of concern for me is the traffic. Now, I'm all for affordable housing and more housing, but it's been a crisis here on the Cape for some time, and I'm not one that's like, not in my neighborhood. However, Acapescot Road is busy. It is one of the five fingers, and it connects between the Beach Road and 28. And right now, it's a problem. And it's a problem getting out onto 28, which is most, the primary access point. And I want to know, is there going to be a traffic light out there? It needs to be one. There's one that has been a problem for many years, lots of accidents, and every time there's an accident, there's a telephone, I mean, a utility pole that's right there, and it knocks out all the lights for the neighborhood, every time we have an accident there. And during the summer months, it's horrible. It's 20 minutes sometime trying to get out onto 28 during the summer months when the tourists are here. So, and, and when most of the residents, some of the, there are quite a few properties further down towards the beach area that are, you know, dual residents, they're not always there full-time. But the half of Acapescot that is closest to 28, those are mostly full-time residents. And I'm among them. And it's horrible trying to get out onto 28. It's difficult enough during the winter months. Not everybody's courteous and let you, and let you get in and have access when, you know, when you need to. But during the summer, you know, we have a lot of businesses who are not as courteous, and I'll put it in those terms. But it's a real concern for me, when we're talking about 24 parking spaces, which means that that's 24 cars, and we're not even counting guests that are coming in and out of there. So it's going to be, it's an issue, it's a real concern for me, and we need a traffic light at 28 in Acapescot.
Thanks, sir.
My concern is there's a little, there's a lot too much.
Could we have your name, please, ma'am?
Can you hear me?
We just need your name, ma'am, thank you.
So everybody knows who you are.
I know who you are.
I'm sorry. My name is Frances Jamello, and I live on Acapescot. I just think that there's too much going on in this too little bit of land. 24 cars, six places, plus all the other things that you add in. I think it should be cut down a little. 24 cars is a lot of cars, to having that little piece of land. So that's my gripe.
Thank you.
Joe Baker, one last comment about the traffic.
The other issue that may not be apparent is that at least five of the homes on Acapescot, including at the intersection of the Beach Road, have quadrupled in size. You know, they've gone from 1,500 square feet to 6,000. That's not just two more cars, you know. In the summer, there's probably room for five or six cars in each one of those properties. And, and that's their business, but it's our collective business to make sure that the residents all can live in a way that's meaningful for everybody. So, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I guess just to add on to that, our, the, sorry, the Bayberry, Diane McElroy again. The Bayberry issue was, I had two elderly people living with us, both had Parkinson's. An ambulance couldn't get down there, and I guess that goes back to the traffic light. It took a really long time to get down there. It's a, it's a, not just the fact that Bayberry is one-way and dirt and kind of pitted, but it was trying to get off 28. It's the Cape all over, I mean, I understand that. But we're just considering all the safety issues. Just one more thing.
Susan Gallagher, and I live on Green Cove Lane, which is off Acapescot. And I guess I just want to reinforce the traffic problems that I'm considering, thinking about, because I wonder if any kind of traffic study was done about the volume. I don't know if that's customary, but if, I agree with Paul and many of the others who've talked about it. Has anybody ever looked into how many cars are going down on, on average? And as he said in January, in the wintertime, it's very different than the summer. And just to echo, getting off onto 28 is a nightmare, and this will be more cars, so. I just wondered about a traffic study, possibly. Thank you.
Anyone else? So, Nick, I think you've got some feedback and so on. If you want to respond to something, go right ahead.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, that, we recognize there's a traffic problem at Acapescot and 28. There's a traffic problem there whether we build this project or not. Something is, eventually has got to be done up there. I, I will look into if, I know there was, a while back, there was some sort of a plan where they were making improvements along Route 28, replacing water lines, widening the road, bicycle lanes, some stuff. I don't know if it went that far, but I'll, I'll check with engineering department and see if there are any plans on the drawing board for lights up there, but, no. You already know. Yeah, but we, this project falls below the threshold of any traffic studies or anything. The threshold is like 25 cars per peak hour, and we're at like point, 7.2. So it's, it's, but the problem exists. We recognize it, it exists, whether this project gets built or not. And we're still a year away, anyway, so hopefully something will happen in that year with the traffic up there. Mark Shaker has had, you have any hope for the town to do that?
Other intersections that are more burdened than that?
So that was, I just wanted to speak on that, but it's not something we're ignoring.
So, did you say 7.2 cars?
Yeah, I said 7.2, the state has a manual that they use that determines traffic during peak hours for certain types of projects. And we fall under residential apartment, which is .62 trips per day during peak hour, which is what they go by. If you, if you exceed 25, it triggers mitigation, maybe a traffic study and other things. But for 12 units at .62, we're at 7.2 cars during peak hour. So.
So does that, so?
Come up to the microphone and ask the question, please, ma'am, thank you.
I'll share the microphone.
If there's a, thanks. If it's two or three bedrooms, I, you know, I don't, I don't know any couples that don't have two cars.
It doesn't go by bedrooms, it goes by apart, by dwelling units.
Okay, so you're just assuming every unit will only have one car?
Well, we average two cars. So that's, it's average two cars is what we're at, the way they figure it.
But is that only for your, your development?
Ms. Glass, questions need to come through the chair, people need to be recognized. Please go up to the microphone so that the record can record what you're saying and asking, sir. If you have a question, please come up, sir, thank you.
I guess my question is, is this study for adjusted development, or was the study done for Acapescot Road?
No, it's not a study. It's a trip generation manual that the state has for traffic engineers to determine traffic, to see if it requires mitigation. And it takes into account all types of different uses.
Okay.
And we fall under residential apartment, or you could say low-rise apartment, a single-family. And either way you look at it, we're under the 25.
Got it, but when was this produced?
This is the ninth edition, this is the most current one. I don't know what year it was, but it's the most current one.
They don't have any responsibility.
It's very common one to me.
They don't have responsibility for the traffic that already exists.
I'm sorry.
Only what they're adding, and they're only adding 24 cars, and when you do, it just, it's, it's below the threshold to consider it.
I think what might be helpful, though, I think the information is available from either the Cape Cod Commission or from town. They usually have the traffic counting data. I don't know the last time it was done, but that is readily available. If that, if you could possibly get that for us, just for the purpose of the record, the butters, just to see what the, what the more recent count on the road is and when it was taken.
The road is now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because Acapescot is pretty busy now. And can I ask one more question? I'm not really sure about the traffic light situation that I was speaking about. Is that something that goes through this board?
No, we, we can't condition a traffic light, that's it, because that's going to be No, we can't condition a traffic light, that's, because that's a state highway. We can certainly pass on concerns to the engineering or to the Mass Department of Transportation, because it's a state highway. You need to call the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. I think we're reaching five out of 10.
But I'm talking about locally.
No, you can, it's a state road, and they don't really have appetite for stopping.
So, nobody in town dictates where the traffic light goes?
Not on a state road.
Not on a state road.
And then, if you put a traffic light there, it means stopping the traffic on 28. I mean, they try to keep it to a minimum. There's going to be no appetite for a traffic light on Acapescot at the moment, even though it is one of the 50 largest accident spots on Cape Cod. Most dangerous stretch of road on Cape Cod is from Jones Road to Fresh Pond Road by a large factor, but.
So, there's nothing that we, you guys can do to other than to make a recommendation?
The zoning, but we have no authority over the State Department of Transportation when it comes to installation of stoplights, regulatory controls, or so on. My suggestion is to contact the State DOT or contact the town's traffic engineer.
Even the applicant doesn't.
Right.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
The applicant doesn't have control either.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, it impacts everybody on Acapescot Road.
It does.
Now, I, and you know, I get it, it's not mine, it's not my problem, it's not, it doesn't affect folks here in this body, but it affects everybody on Acapescot Road, and I'm among them. And we're the ones who are going to have to deal with it, you know, down the road. Once this development is in place and folks are living there and activity begins, so begins our nightmare. So, we need some recourse here.
That's, the contribution to the traffic on Acapescot Road that this is going to have is minimal, that's why it doesn't even reach the threshold of consideration. I mean, I'm sorry to break it to you, but.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, any follow-up questions from the board? I believe we have a continuation date we voted on, and we will continue to 8:00 PM on June 13th. Returning now to the last thing on our open meeting agenda is the zoning administrator update. I will, I do have a board update, and I just came back to my mind, but, Noreen?
I don't have a lot to share that you're not already aware of. Obviously, very busy.
Yes.
Just a teeny.
So, I did have one board update. Frank and I will be meeting tomorrow with the town administrator, as well as the chairman, just to pass on the request we voted on at the last meeting of Saxon regarding board appetite about acquisition of a easement, a conservation easement. So, that will occur tomorrow at 2:00 PM. And I'll be happy to report back to the board.
That'd be good. Shoot Noreen an email, and she can send it to us.
Yep, I will also just be letting the chairman aware that our meeting schedule is such, now that we're meeting on a weekly basis for the next month and a half or two months, and that it is a concern, because that is a lot of time for a volunteer board, so.
Does that mean we're getting paid?
I doubt it. Yes, I'll double what you're getting right now, make a board decision.
Thanks for that.
But I'll pass that on, just to let them know. Any other board updates? All right. So, our next scheduled public hearing will be May 23rd, 6:00 PM, here in the Selectman's Meeting Room at Town Hall. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, we are adjourned, and it is 8:43.